Okay, so it's about eight minutes after seven. I think we're ready to get going. So I just want to say thanks for your patience to the folks who were waiting. We're starting a little bit late, just coming out of a bylaw and policy committee meeting. So so we'll get underway now. So we'll call the meeting to order. And I'm going to ask everyone to stand, please, for O Canada. So Yvonne, there's no sound on that. All right. Thank you. And so we'll begin this evening with a roll call of councillors, please.
councillor Sean Sampson.
Present.
councillor Michael Diggin.
Present.
Deputy Warden Melanie Sampson.
Present.
Warden Amanda Mubriket.
Present.
councillor Bren Sampson.
Present.
Okay, thanks, Don. So are there any items for us to add to the agenda this evening?
I think we've spoken in the bylaw policy meeting about adding many adjustments to the, what's the policy called, councillor? So I haven't policy, I'm not sure what it's.
Councillor's payment policy, yeah.
Okay.
Payment, yeah.
Yeah. To refer that to bylaw and policy.
Great. So could I get a sign of consent by raise your hand from councillors if you agree to add that? Okay, so we have unanimous consent to add that item to the agenda. And could I have any other items to add?
So since we have an in camera, is it possible to get an update on the investigation?
Yes, certainly, yeah. Okay, could I get a sign of unanimous consent from councillors on that? Okay, so we have that item to add to the agenda. Just ask folks to bear with me because I've got a prep document here that I just want to review really quickly. Okay. So any other items? Okay, so hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the agenda with those additions?
Let me.
Okay councillor Sean Sampson, I see you making the motion and then councillor Digden, if you'd like a second? Okay, thank you. So any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, so we have several sets of minutes to review, beginning with January 24th, 2022, regular council meeting minutes. Those minutes were circulated in advance for your review. Are there any errors or omissions to report? Okay. So hearing none, could I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks councillor Bren Sampson. Could I have a second or?
I'll say.
Councillor Sean Sampson, thank you. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favors, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. The next set of minutes are the minutes from our regular, sorry, our public hearing of January 24th, which was held by video conference. So if there are no errors or omissions, could I ask for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, deputy warden. So any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So, third set of minutes are from February 8th, 2022, our emergency meeting. Again, held by video conference, those minutes are circulated in advance. Any errors or omissions? Oh councillor Bren Sampson.
It just kind of a point of clarification for myself, just where I wasn't present, I assume that I shouldn't vote on the approval of these minutes.
Correct.
So I'll abstain from that.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Promoted.
Okay, deputy warden, I think I heard you say that, so could I have a second or? Okay, thanks councillor Sean Sampson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, those opposed? And one extension from councillor Bren Sampson, so that motion is carried. And so the next set of minutes are from the February 16th, 2022, special council meeting. Are there any errors or omissions noted? And if not, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thanks councillor Digden. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you councillor Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, that's the minutes. It's a busy month. And so now I'm going to open it for question period. There is, this question period is a 10 minute max and is restricted to items on the committee of the whole report. And. Sorry, I'm just looking for my committee of the whole report. So those items include electric vehicle charging stations, the Lewisdale Food Bank, electronics disposal, a Kobo Port driveway safety issues, district number three road issues, landline issues during power outages, the ICIP funding program, broadband expansion project, Richmond Port Hoxbury Joint Industrial Commission appointment, World Autism Day and grant request for bourgeois mariners. So are there any questions from the public? And I will remind the folks who are joining us, if you have a question, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to turn your camera on so you can ask your question, or you can use the chat option as well. For anyone who would like to call in, the number is 204-272-7920. Do believe there's a participant code with that as well. Just looking for it. Participant code is 890-4029-5386. So we get open for a few minutes. All right. Okay, so I'm not hearing any voices or seeing any raised hands or chat. Just maybe I'll confirm with you, Yvonne, nothing on your end that's visible?
No, there's nothing in the chat.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And it is the committee report, committee of the whole, which is a lengthy report, so over to you, deputy.
I just had to have a little drink of water before I started. I might need to take a break in between. So this is the committee of the whole report for the month of February 2022. The committee met on February 14th, 2022. The committee discussed electric vehicle charging stations. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that staff investigates costs, funding opportunities and installation costs for level two electric vehicle charging stations for placement at Point Michelle Beach, Lepi Cuss and the Richmond Arena.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, deputy warden councillor Bren Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
I just had a comment if I could.
Yeah.
So not that I want to change the motion, but we may want to consider at the next committee, the whole that we investigate a charging station in Ayrshire as well, because it's come to my attention, I think the rest of council as well, that the charging station in Ayrshire is privately owned and my understanding is it's for the guests of the inn. And I don't know whether we should investigate whether or not they would be willing to, for a fee, allow people to use that or but I do think that we would be missing a big area if we didn't have a charging station in the Ayrshire area as well. So I wouldn't propose a change to this, but I would just propose that at the next committee of the whole, we make a motion, I think, to investigate Ayrshire as well.
Okay, thanks deputy warden. All right, so any further discussion? Okay, so you're ready for the question? All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed the Lewisdale Food Bank. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that staff reach out to the Lewisdale Lions Club regarding options available and determine potential feasibility for a temporary food bank site to be located at the Richmond Arena.
Okay, could I have a second around that?
Second then.
Thank you councillor Digden. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed electronics disposal. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that staff gather information regarding electronic disposal options and investigate potential solutions.
Okay, could I have a second or please? Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. I think there might be a sound issue going on with your computer councillor because I could see your hand, but I, we couldn't hear your voice.
Yeah, same thing here. He's not showing up as muted, but I didn't hear him either. Oh no, you can't hear me now?
Oh yeah, no, we can hear you now, yeah.
Is it bad to say I liked it better the first time, but?
All right, so we have a motion and moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
The committee discussed a Kobo Port driveway safety issues. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the municipality work in collaboration with the SEASAP and a Kobo Port administration to investigate potential solutions for safety issues in the driveways entering and exiting a Kobo Port school property.
I'll second that motion.
Much, councillor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed district three road issues. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the warden and deputy warden draft a letter to the Department of Public Works indicating safety issue concerns with erosion and flooding on Evanston Road and Langley Lane in District Number Three.
Okay. Thanks deputy warden, could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thanks councillor Bren Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed landline issues during power outages. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that a letter of concern be drafted by the warden and deputy warden in collaboration with the MLA regarding the landline issues occurring during power outages in Dundee, St George's Channel and Grand River.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much councillor Bren Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried.
The committee discussed the ICIP funding program. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the recommendation from the Director of Public Works be accepted and that the municipality proceed with two applications to the ICIP funding program for the following two projects ranked in priority. Ayrshire Pettinagraw Sewage Treatment Plant Replacement, former landfill closure work.
Could I have a second around that motion, please?
Second that motion.
Councillor Sean Sampson, thank you. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.
The committee discussed the broadband expansion project. I'm starting to fail. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that warden Mubriket, in collaboration with the Cape Breton Partnership, coordinate a meeting with Develop Nova Scotia and Bell Alliance in order to, in order to gather information regarding the broadband expansion project.
Okay, could I have a second around that motion?
Second that.
Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, that motion's carried.
The committee discussed a Richmond Port Hoxbury Joint Industrial Commission appointment. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that councillor Sean Sampson be appointed as a member of the Richmond Port Hoxbury Joint Development Commission.
Okay, could I have a second around that motion, please?
I'll second that motion.
All right, any further discussion? Thank you councillor Digden. Yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Please don't oppose that one. Okay, that, that motion is carried. Thank you.
The committee discussed World Autism Day. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the municipality participate in World Autism Day on April 2nd, 2022 with a flag raising and proclamation ceremony and that the flag, that the autism flag be flown for a one week period.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Bren Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried.
The committee discussed a grant request. I move that council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the committee recommend to council that the grant request for the River Bourgeois Mariner Society type four regional health general grant funds in the amount of $5,000. $500 from District Number Four, 4,500 from General Grant Fund be approved.
I'll second that motion.
Very much councillor Sampson. Is there any further discussion on that?
Question.
That motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, those opposed? Okay, that motion's carried. I'm starting to fail too.
This is it. This concludes the committee of the whole report for the month of February 2022 and I move its adoption.
Thank you deputy warden. Could I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks councillor Bren Sampson. Any further discussion on the committee of the whole report?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks. That was a long one, yeah. I just slipped, slipped on the wrong button there for a minute. That was, that was great. Thank you so much. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the report from the bylaw policy committee. And I guess I'll just, I'll take care of reading that out because we really didn't, I didn't really ask anybody else to do it, but then I will need both a mover and a second or further report. So this is the bylaw policy committee report for the month of February 2022. The committee met on January 31st and February 16th, 2022. The committee discussed the travel expense policy. And I'll need a motion that council accept the recommendation of the bylaw policy committee and the council give notice to amend the travel expense policy.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks councillor Bren Sampson. Did I see you wanting to second that councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. The committee discussed the volunteer fire department payment and reporting policy. And we'll need a motion to, for council to accept the recommendation of the bylaw policy committee and that council give notice to adopt the VFD payment and reporting policy as a policy of the municipality of Richmond County.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks councillor Bren Sampson. Councillor Digden.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Second that, thank you. Any further discussion?
Question.
Yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. The committee discussed the vaccination policy. I move that council accept the recommendation of the bylaw policy committee and the council give notice to adopt the vaccination policy as a policy of the municipality of Richmond County. And of course, I think I've read I move, but I will need a mover on that motion, please.
I'll make the motion because I guess we're not, we shouldn't by rights be discussing it until we have a mover in a second, right?
Right. Thank you councillor Bren Sampson. Could I have a second or?
I'll second that.
Thanks deputy warden. So any further discussion?
Question.
Okay, the question's been called, but I feel like councillor Sampson, you have some comments you wanted to make. I will mention, we do have this as an item on our agenda as well. So there'll be an opportunity for discussion there, if that's, if that's an appropriate place. Or if you'd rather do it here, I'm fine as well.
Yeah, I guess, I think we may as well discuss it now, I guess. That's, I just want, you know, if we had him over in a second or I guess we're at the point, I believe HRM was, was dropping theirs as of today. And I know things have changed substantially since our last meeting. Things are changing quite quickly. On one hand, I guess it does seem like it's probably a fool's errand to go ahead with this now, however, given the fact that things changing so quickly and this is not final notice, this is only first notice. I'd be fine with pushing it forward and then we make a final decision, assuming nothing has changed at the, at the second reading.
Okay. All right, any other comments from councillors on that? Deputy warden?
I would be inclined to agree. It's, it's not going to hurt anything to do it. We, we did agree on it at the bylaw policy meeting and no, though things are changing, they haven't officially changed yet, so.
Right. Okay, then the process would be, you know, later on our agenda, we do have the, the notice of motion, right? So the processes that it would need to, it would need to come back to our regular council meeting in March. Lots can happen between now and then, as we know.
Yeah, and my thoughts are that if we, you know, if we decide not to go ahead with it, then great, you know, if we feel it's not necessary. But if we didn't move forward on it now and something did change, then we've put ourselves back another month or two, you know, so.
Right.
It would be in our best interest just to go through with it this evening and then make a final decision when second reading comes.
Okay. So, so just to be clear, though, it's, it's not, it's a policy, so it wouldn't be a second reading of a bylaw. It would, it would actually, so what we're doing this evening is, this is our, this is our motion to bring it from bylaw to the council agenda. It's on the council agenda as a notice that we're going to make the motion. And then in the next meeting, we would adopt, we would actually have the motion to adopt as opposed to the motion to give notice to adopt. So it's a little different, but same kind of number of steps, right? We still have that. Yeah.
It's going to come back to us next Monday when we have our.
Right.
Committee of the whole. And we'll finalize.
It'll.
Oh no, regular council in, at this third week of March.
So actually, maybe procedurally, Don or Yvonne, can we use a committee of the whole? I feel like we can't to do a motion to adopt. It would have to come back to regular council, right?
Regular council, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So in three weeks, we'll see it again.
Exactly. Okay, so any further discussion? All right, so all those, I'm going to call for the question and all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So this concludes the bylaw and policy committee report for the month of February 2022. So I'll just look for someone to make a motion to adopt it.
So moved.
Okay, thank you deputy warden. Could I have a second or councillor Sean Sampson? Thank you. Any, any further discussion on the report?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, thank you. All right, so now we're into our notices of motion for the policies that were just discussed. So notice of motion, I look for a motion to, to provide notice of motion to adopt the VFD payment and reporting policy as a policy of the county, municipality of the county of Richmond.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you councillor Bren Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Councillor Mike, thank you. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, the next is I'd be seeking a motion to provide notice of motion to amend the travel expense policy of the municipality of the county of Richmond in order to reduce duplication and to further clarify the difference between in county and out of county travel claim processes.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Okay, I think I heard councillor Sean Sampson first there. So councillor Digden, if you'd like to second it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by councillor Mike Digden. Any further discussion?
Question.
Yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. The next is I'm seeking a motion to provide notice of motion to adopt the vaccination policy as a policy of the municipality of Richmond County.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you councillor Bren Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you deputy warden. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, so I guess, again, I would only, I would just bring to light that, you know, with, with things changing, I hope we don't miss the opportunity that somebody who is unvaccinated applies for, or looks to apply for physician that we can't, that we can't take. And, you know, I would, I don't know, I guess we're putting the cart before the horse at this stage, but again, I would, I would ask, are we, you know, it seems like would everybody pulling back in the province, changing their, their aspect of people don't have to get vaccinated now leads to the question of, do we really want to implement that policy?
Right, okay. Thanks councillor Digden. Councillor Bren Sampson.
Yeah, just to be clear councillor Digden, we're only giving notice of this. This doesn't make it enforced. Still has to be second reading. That's why the discussion we had was thinking it's just as well to go through with this on the odd, the odd chance that anything changes. And then we can decide not to proceed with it on second reading if we feel it's not appropriate at that time. But if we decided not to now, and something did change, it would put us back to the starting point. Yeah, and I, I agree councillor Sampson, that, you know, for, for me, it's always been about legal ramifications here and, and legal issues for me. So if, if we do this, you know, right now, as of today, you don't have to show proof of vaccination, right? So anybody that is willing to apply for a job or wants to apply for a job or any of our current staff that's unvaccinated at the moment, they have 60 days to comply, right? So. No, they would only, they would have the 60 days from when it becomes a policy, not from now. That's what I, right, that's what I mean. So the more we drag this on, like you say, more it gives them time, you know, right? When it comes to adopting it in the future, right? So like you say, things can change. They've changed pretty drastically in the last week and a half or so, and they can take another change and her, you know, turn for the worse or, or, you know, whatever, right? So for me, yeah, let's, let's.
turn for the worse or, or, you know, whatever. So for me, yeah, let's, let's, let's put it on to, you know, the next regular council meeting and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Question.
Yep. Thank you. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right. Take a little breath after all. Okay, so I'll move us on to the next agenda item, and it is regarding the Bredora Lakes SEPI re contribution. So this is a series of, first in a series of correspondence that will require action from council. And, and so this specific funding request came in on February sixth to request financial support for SEPI, which is the Collaborative Environmental Planning Initiative. And of which I believe Richmond County is a founding member. And we have traditionally provided funding to SEPI. Well, I won't go, I won't tell you how many years now, but I know it's been a number of years and we certainly confirm that for support last year as well. And would be looking to open this for discussion from counselors. You know, they haven't provided a grant funding request. They're, you know, they're looking, I, I think this is probably something we would handle under budget, so. But I'm open to comments and suggestions from counselors on that. Counselor Brent Sampson?
I would think there wasn't a, well, yeah, I would think that we just move it to budget deliberations, basically. Side of that point, it seemed, yeah, I assume we would likely do that. But unless anyone has different ideas, they want to do something this evening.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Sampson.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Counselor Sampson that we just move with the budget deliberations and take care of it then.
Okay. And having another procedural question, I don't think we need a motion to refer that to budget, but if yep, we do need a motion to refer that to budget. So, thank you. Yvonne's got my back. All right. So could I have a motion then to to move that to budget, please?
I'll make a motion, remove it to budget deliberations.
Thank you, Counselor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Counselor Digtin? Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, so the next item on our agenda is correspondence from the Royal Canadian Legion. And where they have created a new committee for the Veterans Banner Project, and that committee is going to work in conjunction with their veterans' families to honor their service to the country. So they're going to do banners designed from submitted photos to be displayed on the lampposts along Highway two oh six through Arashad. And so they are requesting permission from the municipality to use the lampposts to display those banners. And they'll be displayed during the yearly poppy campaign, which runs from the last Friday in October until three days after Remembrance Day. So the committee consists of comrades Jerry Sampson, Edward Rideout, Joan Clannan, and Vincent Woodrow Jr. And they have indicated that they will be responsible for the hanging and removal of all banners as a project committee. So they're seeking our permission to go ahead and use the lampposts. But also to be the folks who would install and take the banners down. Before we kind of open this for council discussion, I wanted to ask the CAO to chime in to see if there might be any issues around having members of the public doing that kind of work on municipal infrastructure.
Well, we, we do allow it in Lewisdale, and the only thing that we ask for them to do is to make sure that how they attach those banners to the posts. They're not going to damage the, they're not going to damage the posts themselves. They are responsible for, for putting them up and taking them down. And as long as there's no damage with respect to the how they put them on. We allow it in Lewisdale.
Okay. Any other comments from counselors then? Thank you, Dawn.
I, for me, Madame Morton, you went in the direction I was going to go into, like, when it comes to liability stuff, you know, is that permitted from the municipality? So I'm glad you asked that question, and I think, I think we should support the, the, this group. I mean, I've seen this in our areas, right? So I think it's great.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Warden.
That's what I wanted to say. It's really awesome. I really, it's wonderful seeing them in, in through, when you come through Lewisdale and, and you know, St. Peter's does banners for different things as well. I just, I really love the idea. I think it's a great sense of community. So if there's no other discussion, I would be prepared to make a motion to grant them the permission they're looking for.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Warden. It's, it certainly is a lovely touch in our, in our communities. So could I have a second or on that motion? I think maybe Counselor Digtin might have raised you, Counselor Sean Sampson. I like that it's a race these days.
Yep, no, as long as he gets second, it's all good.
Okay, perfect. So any further discussion on that?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So the next item is the correspondence requiring action is from the Eastern District Planning Commission regarding revised appointments. And and so this is something that comes before council, I think, each year. But they require that the county make an official appointment through a motion to, to various municipal positions effective April first, twenty twenty-two. So the building inspection appointments would be building inspectors Harry Martel, Andre Sampson, and Sean Donovan. The alternates would be David McKenzie, Jonathan Martin, and Amanda Esther Brooks. Special Constable was is John Sean Donovan and Jonathan Martin. Development Officer is Andrew Jones. Alternates being John Vane, Wanda Ryan, Leanne Martin, and Don Sutherland. The fire inspectors, Harry Martel and Andre Sampson. Alternates would be Amanda Esther Brooks, Sean Donovan, David McKenzie, and Jonathan Martin. And the appointments for dangerous or unsightly premises administrators would be Jonathan Martin and John Vane. Alternates would be Harry Martel and Andre Sampson. Special Constable again, Sean Donovan and Jonathan Martin. So I would, I guess, be looking for a motion from council to make those appointments effective April first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Counselor Sean Sampson, any further discussion?
Question.
So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the Almeda Historical Society Regarding Funding. So we received a letter from Anne Lovett, who is Chair of the Board of Directors for Almeda Historical Society in the North Farsh Museum. She indicated that she's been working with or had been communicating with staff since the summer of twenty twenty-one. Asking why municipal funding for the IMHS has been substantially reduced for the past fiscal year and did not appear to be at all equal to the funding received by other organizations. So it was explained that the origin of some of the funding that they received from the municipality over the years. But there, you know, there had been a kind of an erosion of institutional memory over time, I think, is what staff had indicated. And and at that time, I think, you know, there was talk of the, it says that Mr. Martel agreed that the municipality had an obligation to roll back a part of the funding cut that had been made by the municipality to the IMHS. So she was just, she's writing this letter to try to prevent that from happening going forward so that they would receive the same level of discretionary funding as other museums in the municipality. It notes that they traditionally received two grants from the municipality. The first, an annual grant and two thousand dollars in discretionary funds to support their work. Including of the operations of the landing in Arashad. It's a discretionary grant that all museums in the county appear to receive annually. And the second grant was independent of the first. It was the result of a legally binding compensation agreement struck in two thousand and two between the municipality and the Historical Society, and she attached that. So the compensation agreement stipulated that they would receive twenty-five hundred dollars annually for the expropriation of the municipality, by the municipality of land owned by IMHS and assignment of responsibility for the Lenore Farsh Building to the IMHS as well. So she's asking for two things for municipal council in the, in the coming fiscal year to abide by the compensation agreement struck with IMHS in two thousand and two. And second, that the compensation agreement would not prevent council from restoring the discretionary funding that it used to receive from council. Last year, she noted all of the museums in the municipality received such funding, and they did not. So the letter goes on to indicate that, you know, they've managed to stay over and open during the pandemic. Are going to be offering summer employment opportunities. They've had some provincial capital funding to support the work of local contractors. And despite receiving absolutely no provincial funding for their operating expenses, which do include insurance expenses of over five thousand annually. So she's asking for us to recognize the financial need of their organization. And and, and she goes on to kind of delineate again the difference between those two sources of funding. And so I'm just kind of capturing the highlights here because I know we've got some folks on the call listening in. So I want to make sure that there's context that they have for our discussion. Yep, so and obviously provide her contact information if we had questions. So I guess I'd open this for discussion by council. Your thoughts or or comments would be appreciated.
I would think it's the type of thing we'll just refer it to budget deliberations. Best to have those discussions at that time, I guess.
Okay, thanks, Counselor.
Yeah, for sure. And this was practice, normal practice in the past at Madame Morton, and there was some kind situation here where where this did not occur this year for this group. Then for sure, we have to have that discussion during budget deliberations to make sure we, we get back on track there when it comes to the funding that we're used to seeing in the past.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Counselor Sean Sampson.
So I'll make a motion that we refer to budget deliberations.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor. Could I have a second or on that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Sean Sampson. And so I think like I know that we had in the, you know, in our kind of budgetary process, we had that listed, but that it is that second agreement. And I think when we went to the two thousand, the agreement is twenty-five hundred. And then, you know, I do think there's been some loss of corporate history there, so appreciate Anne for bringing that up. So is there any further discussion?
Question.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, so the next item on our agenda is again, sponsorship request from the Nova Scotia MiGMA Summer Games. And it is pretty exciting that those will be hosted in Budla Deck this year, July seventeenth to the twenty-fourth. And the letter goes on to kind of describe the games and how they're growing each year. And to, to, you know, they feel that this is the right time to add more cultural components. And, and their goal is to have daily cultural activities and entertainment running in conjunction to the sporting events during the games. So I just would like to say congratulations to Budla Deck, I guess, first of all, for, for hosting and agreeing to host that these games in such a in such an uncertain time. But they are contacting us, asking us to get involved. And they're seeking potential sponsorship, and I don't believe they mentioned an amount.
There was, I think, three or four different levels there. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, and, you know, and obviously, you know, they would recognize us in return as a, as a community sponsor. They did note that the last year, the Summer Games registered approximately twenty-five hundred athletes from all First Nations communities in Nova Scotia. So it's pretty amazing, so. But again, a budgetary consideration. So Counselor Brent Sampson, I think you had your hand up first.
Yeah, I just congratulate them on this because I think it's exciting. I know they had done a presentation to council prior to us being here. Because they were planning on hosting it, I believe, in the summer of twenty twenty, which we all know how well the summer of twenty twenty went for everybody, right? So it's great that they were able to, to get things organized and get it back. And I'll I'll let Deputy Warden say what she has to say.
Deputy Warden.
The only thing I was thinking is, I remember, I also congratulate them. I think it's a wonderful thing. I've had students who've done the coordination for these games in other locations, and it's a very exciting, I got to hear a lot about the interworking, so it's a very exciting time. I'm wondering if they wouldn't be, like, although it's going to be held in the next in our next fiscal year. I'm just thinking about the funds that we still have available in our current grant funds, which we would, we could use before the end of March. And I'm wondering if someone shouldn't perhaps reach out to Isaiah Bernard and just maybe suggest, maybe Counselor Sampson, if you would suggest that that they put in an application under the grant program. We're very tight for time because committee, the whole is next week, but you know, and so I certainly wouldn't want to say that Jason would be able to review it before then, but I just wonder, that may be the best way to, to be able to do some sponsorship there. A decent sponsorship, given what we have left in our budget, and utilize this fiscal's budget. So it may be too tight, but I just, I would say, you know, we, if that doesn't work out, we want to refer it to budget, obviously, but I think that if it would work out, it would sort of solve a lot of problems.
Yeah. So we could both, you know, we could make the motion to refer this to budget and also, you know, Counselor, if you were wanting to reach out to Isaiah or, or, you know, or even Jason, like, I'm sure would maybe have a better understanding of workload and how, how much time it would take to get that together. If we needed to contact, or if we needed to host a special council meeting to deal with it. You know, I do, I know there's another funding request that's come in just this week as well. I'm hoping to get on the agenda for March seventh, so there may be a couple that we could deal with. Special meeting before our March twenty-first regular meeting. So, so, yeah, I mean, Counselor Sampson, would you be okay with reaching out or working with Jason to do that? Yeah, okay.
I can try and get in contact tomorrow and see if, see if we can make any progress on this.
Okay. All right, and then in the meantime, could I have a motion to maybe move this to budget, just in case that doesn't work out?
I'll make a motion over to budget deliberations.
Okay. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Digtin. Any further discussion?
Question.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda are a couple of pieces of correspondence that I received from Arc of the Coast. So the Tim Mank and Jean Kersey, and I know Counselor Brent Sampson, you'd be very familiar with that group, and I know you've been in discussions with them. And after a phone conversation, you know, I suggested that they provide us with some documentation on the work that they've been doing. And I think this is all kind of connecting back, obviously, to that ocean farming series that was in our, on our agenda last time from, in terms of correspondence. This is something they've been working on since, I think, twenty eighteen. Gathering research, communicating with government officials, and securing funding to push initiatives forward. I do believe they've got some funds from the WWF, which is not wrestling, it is I'll have a hard time saying. It's hard to get that brand out of my mind. So anyways, they are looking at rolling out a public education plan aimed at informing communities and the general public of current and impending negative impacts of climate change on our ocean ecosystem. Things that could, you know, potentially disrupt, you know, lucrative fisheries, especially. In my last correspondence with them, they did note that that kind of thing is already happening in Maine. It's causing the migration of the lobster biomass northward, which is, I think, you know, due to the warming of the Gulf, and it's just something I think that we are benefiting from, but there's no barrier on, on that migration, right? And so they've got some concerns about that. And I think the ocean farming work that they're doing, they're really looking at it as a way to diversify our ocean economy here. So they did provide the single page outline and a strategy document to give us an idea. So they did provide the single page outline and a strategy document to give us an idea of the scope of their project going forward. And I think at this stage, we're kind of seeking not really financial support, although nobody ever turns away money, but I think mostly just notional support for the for the work that they're doing on that public education piece. And so I think, you know, potentially a motion of council that they would be able to include in future funding applications or, you know, would be helpful to them. But I'm also recognizing that it's a complex topic. And and, you know, maybe we need to help, you know, have them come in and kind of do a presentation. So I just wanted to open it for discussion from council at this point. So councillor Brent Sampson.
I took the words right out of my mouth. That's what I was thinking. I think for everybody's benefit, for ours and for, you know, anybody watching at home, I think it would be a great idea to to have a presentation on that, so it can be better explained to everybody.
Yeah. Okay. No, that sounds great. Would would councillors be okay with that, you know, and if you're would do the presentation first and then then we can kind of revisit? Okay, great. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to do that, even though the distance is quite far. So we may, if we're in person next time, we may want to provide them with an option for virtual. It's quite a long ways for them to travel. But I certainly would be happy to reach back out to them and councillor Brent Sampson, I'll copy you in on that correspondence as they're in your district area. And yeah, we'll go from there.
Should we have a motion so that that makes its way to our action register?
Sure. So the motion, I guess, would be for the for the warden to reach out to Arc of the Coast, request a presentation.
Yeah. I'm making a motion.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or?
I'll second it.
Thanks Deputy Warden. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried. All right, so the next item on our agenda is correspondence for information purposes. And in your information package, we shared the, I guess, a couple of one-pagers regarding the MIT REAP project, which is a whole pile of letters and an acronym. And it just, I just find it's alphabet soup on these meeting agendas some days. But so the MIT REAP program is something that kind of Cape Breton Strait area had participated in. And it it's a program of MIT, the Institute for Technology in Massachusetts, to focus on regional entrepreneurship acceleration. So REAP stands for Regional Entrepreneurship Acceleration Program. The work's been going on for, I believe, well over a year. And something that really was focused on creating innovation-driven enterprises in this region. The the end result, I think, is is what we are seeing here. And the team had assembled kind of a series of must-win battles, and which I thought were, they should have been included here. I'm just, yep, there it is. In an infographic, you would have seen them. So, you know, developing our our innovation-driven entrepreneurship ecosystem, creating marine renewables and innovation center to create a venture fund, venture capital fund, to support innovation-driven enterprises, to create a potential offshore wind research center, to to host an innovation-driven enterprise retreat and to continue to build that regional innovation-driven enterprise capacity. There's a lot, there's a lot going on on the documents that you would have received, the infographic and the and the venture capital fund, as well as the email from Tyler. And and I guess I was wondering, you know, because, you know, we're part of this Cape Breton Strait region, would council be interested in a presentation from either the partnership or the team champion, is Mayor Brenda Chisbeaton, to kind of learn some more about this? I don't really believe there's any specific action that the count that this council would need to take right now. But but just wanted to open it for discussion and bring, build some awareness about the work of this group, so. And I should say too, you'll see my name on there. It is it is a project that's assigned to me through the college as well, so.
I'm definitely like to hear more about it, so I would be open to inviting them to present to us for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Deputy Warden, yeah.
All right, thanks councillor. Councillor Tipton?
Oh, yeah, do you need a motion as well for?
Yes, I would need a
for a presentation?
Yeah.
So at that time, I guess I would be willing to put a motion forward to and then come down and do a presentation first.
Okay, and I don't mind doing that outreach if that's okay with folks. Okay. All right, could I have a second around that?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Question.
All right, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Right, so the next item on the agenda is the Strait Area, or sorry, Strait Richmond Palliative Care Society. And it's a thank you from them, lovely card that we received for the investment that we continue to make in that organization. And it's lovely to get a thank you card from these folks. But knowing the work that they do, I feel like it's us who should be thanking them. So but it really wanted to just acknowledge the receipt of that note and and thank them again for all they do. And I don't know if any councillors would have anything they'd like to add.
No, I think you, I think you hit the nail on the head, Madam Warren. I know they're thanking us, but maybe, yeah, maybe it should be us thanking them. And I I think they do realize how much accounting appreciates all their work. So that's off to all of them. And and thank you for the for the note, the acknowledgement from them.
Okay, thanks councillor Sampson. Okay, so if there's no further discussion on that item, I will move us on to the next agenda item. Okay, so the next item is over to you, Don, for a staff report on the Dr Kingston Memorial Community Health Centre regarding their funding request.
So as you all have a copy of Jason's evaluation, not really much sense going through it all, just just to just to sum it up by by reiterating his recommendations regarding how we how we may want to proceed as a council. We certainly could provide them with funding if that's council's choice. However, to evaluate the financials on a monthly basis would be the logical way to do it if, if in fact, they wanted to do it based on a deficit. And and provide them with that through a motion of council for the for the prior month's evaluation. And and the realization there, of course, is that that would be a lot of work on a monthly basis. So there is another option that we could evaluate them during the budget process and provide them with funding as we do with other healthcare organizations as a essentially a flat amount that we that we so choose, you know, through our through our negotiations during budget. And of course, that too would be left up to council, whether or not they'd want to do it that way. So it's essentially up to you folks, the choice you want to make. And it's up to you folks how much you want to give, because right now, we don't, we don't know exactly how much to provide them with on a monthly basis. And we're in March, so our current budget is to the end of March. And then we could follow in with with the with the budgeted amount for the 2022, 2023 year through budget deliberations.
Thanks, Don. So any comments from councillors on this? And I I just, can I just start off by saying, like, that that was a piece of work to to go through all that financial information? I want to thank Jason and the and the team for 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 doing that. Comments from councillors?
Again, I guess I would just, like, unless I'm missing something, I I feel like they would fall under type four grants as well. I'm not, and maybe I'm missing something there, but I'm just wondering why they wouldn't have applied under the type four grants.
So I think I think, you know, the the grants, we've tended to avoid any kind of operational support in those. And and we are, you know, we're primarily funding project-related kind of work. So that's likely, I think that's probably why we didn't push it in that direction or or kind of discuss it in that context. That being said, even outside the grant structure, we typically don't provide operational funding, you know. So this is, this is an unusual situation for sure. Councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know they've looked into other funding options, even like, you know, lottery licenses or fundraising and so on. And there's a lot of things that are restricted restricted that for maybe special projects or whatever, but can't go to day-to-day operational. And this is part of the the problem they're finding themselves in. There are some ways they could raise money, let's say, for maybe a specific project or something, but that doesn't really help on the the day-to-day operations. I I think probably referring it to budget would be a good idea, just because it would give us a better time to evaluate things and how we could go forward based on, as the CAO said, we do provide funding to, you know, several other medical facilities, not necessarily just within the county. And and maybe we could look at, look at this as well or decide, you know, where we want to target our funding that way.
Thanks councillor. Yeah, I've recognized it would definitely be to be providing that kind of financial analysis on a monthly basis. I think we want to try to avoid that for sure. So that's a great point, Don, as well. Any other comments from council? All right, well, maybe a motion then to refer to budget?
Yeah, I'd be willing to make a motion to refer to budget deliberations.
Thanks councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second around that?
I'll second that motion.
Councillor Sean Sampson? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Okay, um. So the next item on the agenda, I have a couple of items to discuss. The first is the storm reporting form, which is a potential addition to the emergency plan. So I think as per an action item from around Christmas time, Dawn and I met with Cecil last week, I believe it was. And we discussed kind of the emergency plan, the location of some of the comfort stations and which ones have backup power. When it came down to storm reporting, though, I I thought, so Cecil Frost, REMC, I thought he had some really great insight there. You know, I think we had a really productive conversation around making sure that we're capturing information, but we're not, you know, trying to distract staff from dealing with an emergency situation. Like, so what we really talked about was a kind of post-event strategy. So not not during an emergency, but after an emergency. Mr Frost had suggested that we could potentially add a form to either the plan or by law or by law 50 or both that would capture some key data. So things like the agencies that are involved in the response, the number of people accessing shelters if we have to open them, the times that they were open and closed, and if it required backup power. Also, the use of internal resources and maybe some other issues that might come to mind as as the form was being developed. Or just kind of a general area to capture unusual things. You know, and a great example that Mr Frost provided was he, you know, he talked about the recent opening of the Comfort Center in St George's Channel area, Deputy Warden, right? And the fact that, you know, as a as a municipally-designated comfort center, you know, he had to go and and check out the premise. And, you know, I think they had, you know, they, I'm not sure if they needed to call in snow clearing folks or, you know, like from our Public Works Department and, you know, just to make sure that there were safety concerns that were addressed on entering and exiting. But those are the kinds of considerations that that need to be taken into account. And and I think, you know, I think he noted on that day, nobody actually used the center because, so, you know, a lot of people in that region do have backup power generators, but the power had been out for a very long time. And so, you know, still kind of worth opening so that we have that. But but I think starting to understand better what the usage is and and what are some of the issues around it, so that we can do some better tracking. Really, I think the discussion was, we really wanted to put an emphasis on, let's keep it short, gather only the information that's absolutely necessary. We're not collecting data for the sake of collecting data. But just whatever it would, we would need to kind of be able to identify areas for improvement and also trends. I don't think our storm reporting is going to get less, it's going to get a whole lot more as our climate continues to to evolve. And so I guess I wanted to just kind of open that for discussion from councillors to see if you'd be open to, you know, potentially referring that to pilot policy and bylaw to create that kind of a form as an attachment to either the bylaw or the plan. I think also, you know, we may want to convene a meeting of the municipal emergency management advisory committee meeting, a committee group, because, you know, in discussing the plan with him, we kind of did identify some areas where maybe there needs to be some updating. So so time to kind of address that. So I'll open that for comments or discussion from councillors, if you have any questions.
Just thinking what you were just saying, that would it make more sense to maybe go through the emergency emergency measures committee kind of thing and probably propose something to bring back to council further at a later date?
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I think you're right on. I think probably it would need to go through emergency measures first or emergency management first. I'm not sure procedurally if we would need to take it to policy and bylaw. You know, if if we can suggest a bylaw change outside of, you know, that would come direct from that committee to council, I think we could. But I'd look to staff, I guess, to provide some clarification on that procedure. So that's a great point councillor. Councillor Tipton?
I think, I don't know, maybe we want to even look to our, you know, our neighboring Budla Deck. They have an emergency measures coordinator there as well. So it might be something if we're going to put in place, we may want to incorporate, you know, I guess, all of Richmond County. And again, you know, maybe see what their what their process is and how they do it. I do know, I can, I can say or it could be wrong, but I thought, and maybe our CAO can correct me. But I thought we had generators available for all the, I'm going to say halls. Is that still something that we have? I know several years back, we used to have generators in that kind of pretty, and I know it's just a small scope of it. But one of the things we ran into, or I ran into two weeks ago, was I was out at one of the halls and the power went out. And that was one of the topics was, you know, if, how did they get a hold of the of our emergency measures guy? And then he has to then try and take the generator from Booze Dale or wherever they're stored out to, I guess, Little Lance or or Ray Shat or, again, I don't know, maybe our CEO can answer that question. Are they still available? Are there still generators available for all these halls? I know at one point, there was a bunch that were purchased.
There is an actual list of comfort centers and, to my knowledge, there there is a list indicating which ones have generators. Now, the generators, in most cases, are at the facilities themselves unless there are facilities that don't have the ability to house the generator. And in that instance, they would be housed at another location. I believe that's the case, that may be the case in St Peter's for the lake, for one of the one of the comfort centers in that region. But for the most part, the generators are are on location. So I don't know which facility you're referring to and and perhaps they're not a comfort center. So in that case, I don't know if that, if they would have received the generator from the county.
No, in large ways, the fire department, I believe, is listed as a comfort center. And they have a generator there that's not, it's not a piece of equipment from the fire department. It's a county-owned generator.
So is that something we can, I'm sorry, is that something we can get a list of?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Warden?
I was just gonna say that we did get that information previously, I, from, I think, Chris, I'm pretty sure we got that, I think, when we first started. But I mean, I'm sure Don can descend it again. But we did get that list that talked about where the comfort centers were and what equipment was located in those places. But and then, and I think he and what, uh, equipment was located in those places, but, uh, and then, and I think he had indicated where the, um, generators are that can be moved to the comfort centers, but.
Yeah, and I only asked for maybe an updated list because the, uh, I do know that the Almeda and Party Volunteer Party Department had made some drastic changes with, uh, you know, wheelchair accessible showers and, uh, full kitchen and they were looking to apply for that, um, to become a, yeah, a comfort center, so again, maybe, maybe it made it through, maybe it didn't, I'm unsure, but if we could get us, get an updated list, that would be great.
Great, okay, thanks, Counselor Digdon. Okay, so, um, essentially, I think what we would need to do with this, um, I did just check in with Yvonne about kind of process. If, if for this bylaw to be shifted, um, if, first of all, I will say it's, it's quite a lengthy process because it requires ministerial approval, this particular bylaw, um, even with the addition of something just as simple as something as a storm reporting form. It may be something we can just, and, you know, add to the emergency plan, but it would have to go through policy and bylaw before it would come to council. Um, however, I think maybe the discussion could start with the emergency man, you know, in emergency management committee um, as kind of the the route to get into bylaw and policy, so, um, so at the end of the day, I guess I'd be looking for a motion to refer this to bylaw and policy, um, but also to collaborate with the emergency management committee. Thanks, Counselor Sean Sampson. Uh, could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Digdon. Any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So again, I just want to say a thank you again to both, uh, Dawn Marshawn and Cecil Frost for, um, providing all that background information and for them, for the chat. Um, okay, so, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, really, it's a welcome uh, for Everwind and I, you know, I know it's not, uh, new news to anybody at this stage of the game, but, uh, in mid February, we had a pretty significant announcement, I think that's going to impact Richmond County, um, and our, in the Point Tupper area and our, in our heavy industrial park. In mid February, New Star Energy announced that it had entered into an agreement to sell its, uh, terminal, um, in Point Tupper to Everwind Fuels. The existing infrastructure, including the deep water ice free birth, the rail access and the storage facility, um, give Everwind flexible options for a green hydrogen facility. And as I understand it, the hydrogen will be supplied to local and surrounding markets, while some will be used to produce green ammonia, which is one of the main components of agricultural fertilizer and is a primary refrigerant for industrial cold storage, uh, as well, so. Uh, so it's quite a shift, uh, in terms of the business model. Um, I want to thank the new owner, uh, who is Trent Vichy for reaching out just prior to the sale to connect, uh, with me um, and appreciate his early engagement and desire to work with our community. I know, you know, obviously, we had to keep that, uh, you know, any, any conversations prior to the sale, kind of confidential, but, uh, certainly appreciated his desire to, um, to be engaged, uh, with, with our municipality. Um, and so I guess I would take this opportunity to just publicly welcome Mr. Vichy and Everwind to Richmond County. Uh, we're excited to have you here and, um, and hopefully we'll get to see you in person really soon, but um, I do want to just kind of relay some information that Mr. Vichy asked me to pass on, uh, to council and of course, uh, for, to the broader community that they are grateful for the positive support that they've received so far from Cape Breton and surrounding communities as they look to introduce a new clean energy business to the region. So together, he, he notes that we can show the world how Nova Scotia can be a leader in converting low cost renewable energy into clean fuels, which is the next step in the clean energy journey, so, um, pleased to say that Mr. Vichy seems really open to future conversations and does plan to be in the region, region frequently, so, um, I guess I would just, uh, this time maybe ask counselors, uh, to, you know, consider, you know, there may be a, you know, an opportunity to have him, you know, visit council or to host, uh, perhaps a reception in partnership with, uh, maybe the Chamber of Commerce of something to that effect, if that would be agreeable to him. I don't think we need to make, uh, any kind of specific recommendations this evening. I think those conversations will evolve as he gets his feet on the, on the, the ground of Richmond County, um, but, uh, I just, uh, want to kind of present those as some options, so, uh, it's big news and, uh, exciting, exciting news as well, so. Any comments or questions from counselors on that? All right. Okay, well, that's great. Thank you, uh, everyone. Um, so I also have, uh, an update next on the agi, uh, agenda uh, for the bilingual signage, um, so as counselors will recall, you know, I think it was, well, it was definitely last year, we had accepted the request of the province to have bilingual signs installed in our county and I had drafted, drafted a, a letter to Minister Diab to that effect at the time. Um, but then following an update and an inquiry for, that I received from Josette Marshawn at Lapicas, uh, she found out that other communities were moving forward, but it didn't look like Richmond was included. Um, but when she looked into the matter, she found that organizations like Lapicas and other municipalities like Clare had submitted formal requests to be part of the program as well, so. Um, so I wrote a follow up letter to the current minister because of course we did have a change in government. Um, and, uh, I wrote a letter to Minister Masland of Public Works to reconfirm her desire to accept the province's offer to have those signs, um, and, uh, provided a copy of that, uh, to Ms. Marshand, and she included both letters in a formal request from Lapicas uh, as the, you know, uh, Acadian cultural organization to participate in the program with Public Works, and so the province is now at this stage asking us to determine the villages uh, or regions where they do, where we would not want to have bilingual stop signs. Um, so our previous letter, the original to Minister Diab and, and even the one I wrote to, uh, Minister Masland, aligned with our motion was, which was to have English signs replaced with bilingual signs on provincial roads located in Richmond at no cost to us with the exception of any current signs that are already bilingual in English Migma. So I just, I guess at this point, we wonder from council, are there any other exceptions in terms of areas where you feel it would not be appropriate? Um, to have those bilingual signs itself? Good to go?
I'm not sure, maybe the further eastern end of, of District Five, um, or Scottish heritage probably there than French on the eastern end of it. Um, I, I, I don't, uh, but, uh, oh, Counselor Digdon?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if I, uh, if I drove out, um, Rocky Bay side, they would probably prefer if I could put it in a, in a different way, but we all have to understand that, um, you know, it's, it's not about, it's just about making our signage better, not about, uh, decreasing it, so we already have them in English and, uh, adding the French is just an added for our tourist and everybody else, so, you know, it's not like we're adding her into it. And we are recognized as a bilingual county, so why not, you know, go forward with the bilingual signs?
Yeah, you're, yes, it's correct, we are designated Acadian riding, yeah.
And depending who you talk to, uh, uh, Counselor Digdon, depending who you talk to, like you say, uh, Almeda is looked at as Il Madan, so, you know, all Almeda should, you know, like you say, we should have valuable signs so, in as many places as we can for sure on this island and in Richmond County.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Sean Sampson. Um, so Counselor Brent Sampson, just to follow up on your comment about sort of the eastern end of District Five, um, do you think it would be inappropriate to have the bilingual signage, uh, out that way, um, like?
I'm not sure, I guess if the rest of the county even, I would come thinking of, like even, I don't know what, uh, Deputy Wardens thoughts are, like Dundee and, and, uh, that area or even, uh, Point Tupper and so on, right, like, um, but maybe just as well do the whole county.
Okay, thanks, Counselor. Uh, Deputy Warden?
My thought was to do the whole county, you know, the, the main reason when we talked about doing it was because we are a bilingual, you know, designated as a bilingual, wasn't a Canadian community, so I feel it should be everywhere, even though it may not be necessarily applicable, I, I think it is applicable to the county as a whole.
Okay.
Probably, yeah, if we start trying to figure every level of community that doesn't want it or like does or doesn't and so on, and that will just get too deep into the weeds. It's kind of an all or nothing.
Yeah, I think I, I, I would have to agree, I, I do think, you know, as long as we continue to make the point that if there are um, bilingual English Migma signs, we definitely would not want those replaced, you know, removed, um, but, um, but I think you're, I think you're right, Counselor, it would be, it would be getting into a lot of weeds, trying to figure out, you know, and it's, you know, I guess from my perspective, it's really not about identifying a specific community within Richmond as Acadian or French, you know, I, I think it's more about um, just, you know, recognizing that we are a designated riding.
The county as a whole, yes.
Yeah.
And, and again, there is no cost to the municipality?
There is no cost. Okay, well, then I will, uh, follow back up with, just to let her know that as long as certain existing bilingual, uh, English Migma signage, that we would have no exceptions, that it would, it would be through the region, so. Um, we've already passed a motion, I guess, to that effect, that, you know, I'm not sure if we need another one, um, but I did, I did want to just make sure that council is in the loop as to where that all stood, so, and, and thank you to, to Ms. Marshon for bringing that, uh, to, to my attention as well. Okay. Um, so the next item on our agenda are community acknowledgements, and I did have a couple here that I wanted to mention. I'm recognizing, uh, the time here, so I will try to keep it short and we have a couple of items added, but I do think it's important, um, to recognize that there is now an emergency broadcast system in place, a T L L, so congratulations to their team for, uh, making that happen. Um, it's part of the National Public Alerting System and that enables emergency management organizations in Canada to warn the public about imminent or possible dangers such as floods, tornadoes, hazards, materials, fires and other disasters. It's also used for amber alerts and other urgent bulletins about child abductions when a child sought to be in grave danger, so. Um, it's really fantastic to have these potentially life saving warnings, um, available in our area, they are area specific, geo targeted. Um, and the type, type that you would get, I think typically on your smartphone as well, so, um, when an alert is issued, it's broadcast on TV and radio as well. And so, uh, yeah, congratulations again to them, I am, you know, thinking that given our discussion on the emergency management plan this evening, that is maybe something we want to have integrated into the plan as well, um, so, uh, so something for us to consider going forward. Um, any questions or comments from counselors about the emergency broadcast system, T L L? Okay, perfect. Um, so the next item I had on the agenda was just a congratulations to, uh, our University de Saint Dan. The Marine Research Center here in Richmond County is, uh, getting some in, uh, funding from Invest Nova Scotia and a few other partners to help strengthen and grow our marine and aquaculture sector. Um, they're receiving, I think, from Invest Nova Scotia, a little over three hundred thousand over two years to create an innovation hub for local industries in the marine and aquaculture sector. That hub will provide a space for the sector to solve business challenges, explore, apply research ideas and to collaborate with industry experts and, uh, just wanted to say a huge congratulations to Michelle Terrio and the team at University de Saint Dan because I think that's an incredible asset in our county and nice to see some additional recognition and investment going into it from our uh, provincial and federal partners for sure. Um, I don't have a lot of additional details on that, but I'm thinking, um, might be nice some time for us to reach out to, uh, Michelle to see if maybe she'd like to do a presentation to council to, so we could learn more, um, about that. So I, I know our presentation slate is pretty full right now, but, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind checking back in with her at some point if, if it was the will of council to see if she'd be willing to come and just have a chat with us, to let us know what's going on at University de Saint Dan, so. Any comments or questions from counselors on that?
I, I think that's a great idea, Madame Morton, for, uh, to, to, to have a presentation and to, to better explain, uh, ins and outs of the Marine Center at, at the P cast, I think that's, that's a great idea and I'd look forward to seeing that presentation.
Yeah, they do incredible work there, incredibly, yeah. Okay. Um, and then the last community acknowledgement I had on my list was, uh, Ri- Richmond County Literacy Network, um, just a congratulations to their work options graduates. Um, there were eight participants who recently graduated from a twenty week back to work program, which was sponsored by the literacy network and funded by Nova Scotia Labor Skills and Immigration. Um, it's a huge commitment of time by the participants and, uh, incredible to see that commitment to contributing to our region and, uh, and that continued, uh, commitment from the literacy network for their continued efforts to improve the lives and literacy of people living here in Richmond County, so congrats to all of the grads and congrats to the literacy network for, um, for your work on that program. Any questions or comments from counselors?
So I just have one, I guess, if I could, uh, add on to your, uh, so last week I made a distinction, I guess, our last meeting to, uh, one of the employees at the county, and then it was brought actually to, uh, brought to my attention that maybe I missed a guy who was, uh, standing in the water hole all night long and the other guy who was freezing outside all night long fixing the water main. So, you know, I guess, uh, I guess my, my shout out then would be to all the municipal staff or all the hard work and everything they do, I would like to, uh, say thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Digdon, yeah, that's the danger we, we run when we start to name names, right? You always miss someone. Thank you, uh, Deputy Warden? Oh, you're muted.
Just wanted to acknowledge, uh, the Losdale Lions Club for continuing to do good work in the community, uh, on Saturday, they held a bottle drive uh, to raise some money, actually for the hearts of Almeda, which is actually a community home located in Ayrshire, so nice work across the county, um. Uh, we do have a, a lady who was, who used to live in Losdale, is living there now, so it's nice to see us be able to support across the, the county and again, thanks to the Losdale Lions Club for, again, uh, you know, organizing, uh, spearheading this wonderful event.
Awesome. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Okay, um. So I think that brings us to a close on, uh, the items that I had on, uh, under my name on the agenda. Um, be, and so the next item would be the review of action items from the January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two regular council meeting. Um, and Counselor Sean Sampson, I believe you and I need to regroup on one of those items because, um, I, I sent through a draft and then I think you and I just didn't get a chance to connect, um, to add in some of the details about the, the, um, the, the high road, right? I just wanted, wanted to put a little extra detail in there, but, as you could see from the minutes, it was a busy month, so we'll get, we'll get on that.
Yeah, no, for sure, yeah, and, uh, yeah, I, I told some of the residents that, uh, yeah, that letter is going to the province, we just want to make sure that, uh, uh, we have all the information needed to, to send that, so, yeah, thank you.
Exactly. So any questions from counselors on the action items for review? Okay, so here and then, I'm going to move us on to the next item on the agenda, which is the items added, um, and we had two of those, so the first was the counselor's payment policy, um, and so I guess I'll provide a little background, um, is, uh, we, you know, at our bylaw and policy committee meeting, we've been working on, um, the management, uh, salary policy to, uh, to, uh, set that in stone as a, as a recurring policy of council, and Counselor Brent Sampson, uh, you brought up the, uh, the notion of also reviewing the counselor's payment policy, um, as well, uh, so that we are kind of doing them all in alignment. And I don't know if there's any further comment you wanted to make on that, but this would be, I guess, intending to refer to policy and bylaw.
Yeah, it was just the fact that, uh, originally prior to, uh, staff's unionization and, uh, prior to even with management, prior to the discussions we had tonight, there was, you know, there was an index tied to CPI, there was an adjustment tied to CPI where, uh, that won't be the case going forward for everybody else and I was just thinking especially where CPI is going to be especially high this year, um, we, I don't think we want to give the impression that, you know, there's a larger increase for, for, uh, counselors than there would be for staff, so I, I thought it would be in our best interest to review that sooner rather than later.
Yeah, absolutely, okay, and we did, we did forego it in the, in the last budget, but like, I think you made the point earlier, Counselor, you know, we should set that in policy so that we're not put in a position of, of breaking policy when we, you know, when we're moving forward, so. Okay, um, so could I have a motion to refer that to policy and bylaw, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or? Okay, uh, Counselor Digdon, I think I heard on that one first, so any further discussion on the counselor's payment policy?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried. All right, so the next, uh, item on the agenda is question period, um, so this is, uh, question period, uh, again, about ten minutes long, restricted to the remainder of the agenda, following the committee of the whole and bylaw policy. restricted to the remainder of the agenda, following the committee of the whole and bylaw policy committee reports. And, and so again, the options for participating in our question period, if you're with us on the line or sorry, on the Zoom call, you can either raise your hand or you can type in the chat. We'll get you to turn your video on and you can ask a question. The other option is to phone in and the number is two zero four two seven two seven nine two zero and the meeting code is eight nine zero four zero two nine five three eight six. So I'll just leave that open for a moment to allow for any questions. Okay, I'm not seeing anything in the chat. Okay. All right, so Yvonne's not noting any either, so I think we'll move us on then. So the next item is to move us in camera. So could I have a motion, please? Or yes, before I ask for the motion, I just want to thank everybody in the, in the gallery, virtual gallery for participating this evening and for tuning in. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to move us in camera, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Sean Sampson. Could I have a second or?
No, second then.
Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. So any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, are we gonna have to, I don't know if Yvonne can clear this up, are we gonna have to leave this one open somehow or to get, like, it's a separate link, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll have to close this one.
But, yeah, I guess I don't know that there'd be anything coming out of it, but in order for the recording, I guess it won't show up on the end of the
No, that's right. So, and, and that, that is the drawback of our online Zoom meeting, right? Yes, exactly, exactly. So it's just technically not, not, I guess we could start a new Zoom meeting, but then it would be, you know, for now, if there wasn't anything coming out of it. So, but, but, I mean, of course, everything would be recorded in the minutes, so. Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So thanks, everyone. We'll close this meeting down and join the in-camera link.
Night, everyone.
Good night.